Mic check, one, two, checking levels. Mic check, checking levels. One, two, one, two. Thank you, the time is now six o'clock, like to call the meeting of the Fairbanks North Starborough Board of Education to order. The school board would like to take this moment to respectfully acknowledge that we're residing on the traditional land of the Dunae people. Permission statement, our mission is to provide an excellent equitable education in a safe supportive environment so all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Ms. Tuttle, can you call the roll?
Mr. Rhodes.
Here.
Thank you, Colonel Williamson is excused. Colonel Surrey is expected by Zoom. Mr. Sampson.
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Matheson.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Doran.
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Sanderson.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Maradi.
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Luke is excused, Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Thank you, the board has a quorum.
Thank you, our first item will be the 2022 AASP Region Six Assistant Principal of the Year. Dave Foshee, West Valley High School Assistant Principal was recently named the 2022 Alaska Association of Secondary School Principals, Region Six Assistant Principal of the Year. Sarah Gillum, West Valley High School Principal will make the presentation.
Good evening, I have the distinct pleasure of recognizing Mr. Dave Foshee as the Region Six Assistant Principal of the Year. And for the past nine, I can't say that number without like realizing it, Dave, nine years, I have been incredibly fortunate to work side by side with Dave at West Valley. I cannot think of anyone more deserving for this award. He has made, I'm gonna cry, probably multiple times, so just everybody, it's okay. He has made such a lasting impact on so many lives, he has given his passion, time, and care to each school community he has been a part of during his career. Dave started in the Fairbanks North Starborough in the Fairbanks North Scarborough School District as the principal at Joy Elementary, and this year his wife Stacy is serving as the interim principal there. She's shared that this year she has had many parents tell her what a positive influence Dave was in their children's lives, and how their child wouldn't have graduated or made it through high school without him checking in on them and pushing them to do better. Creating weekly or bi-weekly check-ins with students is one of the ways David made this happen, and these meetings were the highlight of his day. Someone once wrote in the district digest that he has the most integrity of anyone they have known, and that speaks volumes about a person. I also asked other staff members who have worked with Dave to share their reflections, as I had too many to sort through, and here is some of what they had to say. "Dave truly exemplifies patience with a capital P. He leads by example with the most non-judgmental humble heart when it comes to life situations and circumstances that are not within your control. I can always depend on him to be approachable when it's necessary. To me personally, he is not only my colleague but my friend for the past nine years. He will stand by you anytime, anywhere with words of encouragement and wisdom. I know of very few individuals that will help you without reservation or seeking acknowledgement." Dave is a powerful instructional leader who works directly with students. He gives useful feedback and puts students at ease while also pushing them to excel. Students speak so highly of him, and it is because he values each of them and their unique strengths and identities. He will move mountains to ensure each student stays in school and gets the best education possible." Okay. Dave has made it a point, Dave's retiring this year too, so this is like even especially more emotional for me. Okay. Dave has made it a point to mentor teachers and work with teachers as partners. He also makes it a point to see students and hear their perspective, and help them experience success as they learn how to dream. Many of these students are where they are at because Dave believed in them. He ultimately believes in the goodness of people. He is a treasure. That was one of my favorites. Okay. Part of what makes Dave such an outstanding administrator is his unwavering calm, kind, and caring demeanor, which allows him to make thoughtful decisions that are always in the best interest of the students and staff that he serves. He has a complete and total love for what he does, and he is a steadfast advocate for education. No job is too big, and no job is too small for Dave, and he is always the first to roll up his sleeves and pitch in where work needs to be done, even to come plow the parking lot for hours after heavy snowfall so it would be drivable the next day. Among the many traits to admire and acknowledge about Dave is the fact that he is so approachable for students and families and easily accessible to staff. His highly attuned, common sense approach to problem solving is such an asset to the West Valley community. His vast experience coupled with compassion keeps situations and relationships on a positive track, and perhaps most importantly, he has heart. I was so fortunate to have the opportunity to work with Dave. His guidance was invaluable as his work ethic and passion for excellence is always evident. Working alongside Dave was a consistent learning experience, and my respect for him is immense. Dave is a good steward. He is attentive, and steady, and grounded. He genuinely cares about students and staff and wants the best for everyone. His leadership is grounded in compassion, and he models for students and staff alike how people can choose to act when we are faced with strife and adversity. His approaches to discipline and school activities are aimed at not only keeping our school community safe and civil, but also in encouraging us to be better in our interactions with one another so that we can build healthier and more effective relationships with one another. In a time of increased violence and negative public discourse around schools, Mr. Foshee makes me feel safe, seen, and valued. He is the kind of leader who makes educators feel safe to be human, to not just make mistakes, but to also take risks. Under his leadership, I'm a better teacher. We have shared thousands of laughs and tears throughout the years, and I consider myself extremely fortunate to have had the opportunity to work alongside Dave. This recognition of his committed service is beyond deserved. Dave is an expert in his field who centers and prioritizes students and student learning. He does this in so many ways, from implementing restorative practices to making sure students have the best extracurricular experience they can, to keeping our school safe in increasingly challenging times. He is a fierce advocate for all students, from our GSA to music to athletics. He protects and elevates student voice and talent so students can learn to work and think for life. He is an educational leader who knows that we empower those we serve by empowering those who serve them. Dave Foshee is an exceptional human and expert educator who has positively changed the lives of so many students and families in Fairbanks. He has had a profound impact on my life by helping me stand in my power and have the courage to do the right thing even when it's hard. We are all better because we have worked for him and with him. I echo all of this, especially sharing thousands of laughs and tears throughout the years. Every day he works to help make our world a better place by helping humans become better humans, and I feel so lucky to have worked with him and learned from him for the past nine years. Dave has been an incredible mentor to me, but more importantly, an amazing and steadfast friend. Oh, Dave Foshee!
Okay. Do you want to say anything? It's up to you.
Oh, no, I just gotta say that over the years, it's been, it's been an amazing run. Working with Sarah and the team that we've had over West Valley honestly has extended my, allowed me to extend my career to where I'm at now. One of my favorite things over the last nine years have been seeing my little Joy kids come up and move through high school and graduate, and I was in a unique position to actually see them from littles all the way up to adults now. And it's, it was, that was been probably my favorite part of this whole position. So, thank you, Sarah, and thank you, everyone. I don't know how you found that many people will say something that nice about me, but thank you, everyone, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Our next item will be the adoption of the agenda. Our core value, student, center everything we do on the student and student learning. Consent agenda items marked with an asterisk are considered routine items not requiring public discussion by the school board. Unless removed from the consent agenda, asterisked items will be automatically approved when the agenda is adopted. Questions concerning these items should be directed to the administration before the meeting. If the superintendent or a member of the public wishes to have an item removed from the consent agenda, the request must be made to the board, to a board member prior, at any time prior to the start of the meeting. The board member has the discretion to accept or deny the request. Only a board member may remove an item from the consent agenda. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it shall be considered separately as the last item of new business. Asterisked items will be, then be adopted by one single motion.
Move to adopt the agenda with consent items.
Second.
Thank you. Can we call the roll?
Colonel Siri.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Sampson.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Matheson.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Doran.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Sanderson.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Maradi.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you. And Ms. Meline will read the consent agenda?
The board has accepted the following grant awards in the amount of $7,538.64 for the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, ESEA Consolidated Formula Grant from the United States Department of Education through the Alaska Department of Education and Early Development per fiscal note 2022-08 through 2022-15 and 2022-36. $37,893 for the Career and Technical Education Professional Development Grant from the Alaska Department of Education and Early Development per fiscal note 2022-32. $759,520 for Title VI and $68,122 for Section 619 for the Title VI Special Education and Section 619 Preschool Consolidated Grant IDEA ARP funds from the United States Department of Education through the Alaska Department of Education and Early Development per fiscal note 2022-33 and 2022-34. $772,155 for the Title VI Part A Indian Education Formula Grant from the United States Department of Education per fiscal note 2022-35. $9,500 for the Office of Substance Misuse and Addiction Prevention Grant from the Alaska Department of Health and Social Services per fiscal note 2022-37 and $150,000 for the Alaska Pre-Elementary Grant from the Alaska Department of Education and Early Development per fiscal note 2022-38. The board has approved the fundraising requests of Pearl Creek Elementary School for its library to fundraise approximately $2,500 through the Scholastic Book Fair from February 18th through 25th of 2022 with proceeds to be used for the purchase of library books and supplies. Weller Elementary School for its second grade class to fundraise approximately $1,500 through the Family Dance Fundraiser on February 25th, 2022 with proceeds to be used for the purchase of classroom supplies. And Ben Ielson Junior Senior High School to fundraise approximately $2,000 through the Free Throw-a-Thon event with proceeds to be used to support the school's girls' schools' girls' basketball program. The board has approved Lathrop High School's request to send five junior ROTC cadets and two chaperones to Chandler, Arizona, February 1st through 7th, 2002, to participate in the Army Services Regional Rifle Championship at no cost to the district. And if any local, state, or federal travel or health warnings are issued, the students will not travel. And approved North Pole High School's request to send six junior ROTC cadets, one instructor, and one chaperone to Camp Perry, Ohio, February 9th through 14th, 2022, to participate in the Junior ROTC Air Rifle Service Championships at no cost to the district. And if any local, state, or federal travels or health warnings are issued, the students will not travel. The board has accepted donations of $2,500 from the Denali PTA to Denali Elementary School for the purchase of snowshoes for the school's physical education department. $1,500 from Design Alaska to Hunter Elementary School for the purchase of supplies and classroom materials for students focusing on SEL literacy and math. $1,000 from Salch's Store and Services to Salch Elementary School to provide school-wide water safety instruction for students, including pool fees and bussing. A total donation of $2,000 from Doyon Limited with $1,000 going to Ryan Middle School to support the school's Alaska Native Education Program, including the purchase of cultural arts, crafts, and snacks. And $1,000 going to Tannenau Middle School to support the school's Native Youth Olympics Program. $1,375 from EOSC Welfare Fund to Ben Ielson Junior Senior High School to help cover the cost of air rifle supplies. A donation of $10,454.88 from the VFW Post 10029 with $2,105 going to Ben Ielson Junior Senior High School to help cover the costs of air rifle supplies. $7,324.88 to North Pole High School to help cover the costs of the drill and air rifle team's travel expenses. And $1,025 to West Valley High School to support the school's junior ROTC rifle program. $1,000 to Rachel Seymour, from Rachel Seymour to Lathrop High School to support the school's Seymour Scholarship. A donation of $6,000 from the Fairbanks Use Supports with $1,000 to Lathrop High School to support the school's girls' basketball program. $1,000 to Lathrop High School to support the school's boys' basketball program. $1,000 to West Valley High School to support the school's girls' basketball program. $1,000 to West Valley High School to support the school's boys' basketball program. And $2,000 to West Valley High School to support the hosting of the 2021 to 2022 basketball tournament. And $6,000 to West Valley High School to support the school's hockey program with individual contributions made by Keys and Associates for $1,000, Benjamin Roth for $1,000, Sour Dough Express Incorporated for $1,000, and Fairbanks Use Sports for $3,000. The board has accepted the monthly management reports for December 2021, approved the personal action reports for the period November 22nd, 2021 through January 5th, 2022, and approved the minutes for the December 8th and 13th, 2021 special meetings and the January 10th, 2022 work session as submitted. The board has acknowledged the personnel information report for the period November 22nd, 2021 through January 5th, 2022, the budget transfer reports for the period November 16th through December 31st, 2021, the board's reading file, and the coming events and meeting announcements.
Thank you, Ms. Meline. Our next item will move on to the presentation on the agenda items. We have public comments. Core value is to engage with students, family, staff, and community to support student success. Public comments on reports and non-agenda items are limited to two minutes per person for a maximum of one hour. People who have signed up in advance through the school board office to testify in person or by Zoom will be called upon first, and if time remains, anyone else who is in person will be invited to testify until the one-hour time limit has been reached. A person testifying shall state their full name, spelling their last name, and their city of residence for the record. Board members may ask questions for clarification. Although there is time at the end of each meeting for school board and superintendent comments, some concerns may not be able to be addressed immediately as additional information may need to be gathered. Public input is welcome on salaries, benefits, and any other contractual items regarding the Education Support Staff Association, the Fairbanks Education Association, and the Fairbanks Principal Association negotiations. The first person that we have for testimony is Ms. Christina Ackerman.
Hello.
Hello. Thank you, Ms. Ackerman. If you could just state your name for the record and your place of residence, and you'll have two minutes.
Christina Ackerman, C-R-I-S-T-I-N-A-A-C-K-E-R-M-A-N, and I live in Fairbanks, and I have a middle school student. I'm here to thank you for canceling the universal mask mandate for our schools. When you ignored your medical advisors and the majority of public comments submitted in December, you courageously stood up for freedom. Like you said, there will always be another variant, another travel session. People will sicken and die no matter what you do, c'est la vie. The important thing is personal choice. I also want to thank Ms. Meline, who ignored the rising cases in December around the country and didn't implement universal masks for January 4th, which you do have the power to do despite the school board. All of you have insured skyrocketing cases in our schools, from 15 to 47 cases per day in two weeks, and today there were 85 cases in our schools. You should be proud of taking a stand for freedom. Do not worry that our healthcare system will nearly collapse while some neighbors with chronic conditions will die along with the unvaccinated, or that Fairbanksans who have heart attacks or severe injuries won't get the care they need when our hospitals fill up. Pay no mind that COVID sickens and kills Alaska natives at far higher rates than non-natives. Who cares that Alaska natives are 16% of our population but 27% of COVID deaths? It would be crazy for people to blame you. Clearly, it's caused by institutional racism that has nothing to do with our district as an institution. Finally, I want to thank you all for teaching my son a valuable lesson, that people in power, like you, can ignore the majority's wishes. With your actions on masking, he now knows that people in power will always get away with harming others. I thank you and those like-minded to you in our country for killing almost a million voters, most of them unvaccinated. voters, most of them unvaccinated boomers, with your priorities about freedom. Thanks to you, the rest of us may finally win against this corrupt, anti-science, anti-intellectual, racist, and willfully ignorant idiocracy that your December vote supported.
Thank you, Ms. Ackerman. Does the Board have any questions? Thank you for your time and your testimony. The next person on our list is Carrie Nash.
Hi, my name is Carrie Nash, and I live in Fairbanks. I am dismayed to be coming to you again with pleas for reasonable protection for students and employees here in our district. You have the powers of life and death in your hands, and you're blowing it. You have a primary, underlying job as School Board members to keep the students and staff safe. They can't learn if they aren't safe, they can't teach if they aren't safe. The ripple effects of the negligence of this basic mission surge out to our whole community. You're ignoring science, many of you are refusing to do your jobs, many of you are using political opinions and religious ideology to inform your decision rather than using facts and data, yet you expect teachers to use data to inform their teaching. Long COVID is real. Adults and kids all over the world are experiencing long-term terrible medical neurological and cognitive issues in addition to getting sick and sometimes dying. I know everyone speaks to the students' vulnerability, but I wish to tell you that the teachers and staff, many older or with underlying conditions or with compromised family at home, are trapped by your lack of mitigation. They can't quit, or they'll lose their licenses and insurance. They love kids and are dedicated to teaching. They have no choice but to show up and get infected in crowded rooms with no basic standard precautions such as masking. Many of you obviously think they should do your bidding as if they're not moms and dads and grandmas and uncles with people who love them. Stop this ideological posturing and protect them, do better, care about lives. Remote teaching is supposedly bad, but the babysitting and chaos occurring right now, especially with high COVID rates and busing issues, is not the in-person learning you're all hoping for. Please pause school for two weeks, go remote, or mitigate and mask like you want to save lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the Board have any questions? Thank you for your testimony. The next person for testimony is Stacy Stancell. Thank you. If you could state your name and your place of residence, and you'll have two minutes. Can you see if your thing is green? Just give us a second there.
It's showing green. Oh, now you can hear me. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy Stancell, S-T-A-N-S-E-L-L, in North Pole. Hopefully, you can imagine how emotionally challenging these past couple months have been with this potential school closure discussion and upcoming decision. As principal of Anderson Elementary, the past seven years, I've had my world rocked. What I've known, what I've worked 1,000 hours, thousands of hours with staff to create, what I thought would be my final stop before retirement, has swiftly imploded. And sadly, it feels without much uproar or concern. There will never be another Anderson Elementary. I'm not here tonight to sway your judgment or try to convince you not to close our school. I knew from the moment I walked in to serve on the School Efficiency Task Force that with Anderson being named on each of the four options given to us by district administration, that we were more than likely going to close. It took my breath away then and still continues to wake me up at night wishing it was different. As of today, between the School Board and military leadership, I've only had one of you reach out to check in on how the staff and I were handling this upcoming decision. That's also pretty disheartening. Please, after your vote on February 1st, don't forget about the Anderson staff these next few months. Anderson Elementary has served this district very well through the years. School communities become family, and our Anderson family has been simply amazing to be part of. It is the Anderson staff that makes our K2 school so effective with their primary students. Our parents love our school and the relationships we build with their children. They love the safe haven we've created through PBIS, the focus on literacy, math, their children's social, emotional well-being. We can't forget the love everyone has for Andy the Thunderbird. There will never be another Anderson Elementary. In closing, what I'm here to ask you tonight is to consider one last request. Will you consider renaming our newly combined school, Anderson-Crawford Elementary, starting in the fall of 2022? Our school is named for Major Rudolph Anderson Jr., an Air Force pilot who was shot down over Cuba on October 27, 1962. Major Anderson was the first U2 pilot to photograph secret missile sites in Cuba, and he was the only American killed during the Cuban Missile Crisis. We are proud to honor this American hero by bearing his name. Please consider keeping his name attached to Crawford and not lose all of Anderson Elementary's history in one vote. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Did any Board members have any questions for Ms. Stancell? Excuse me, Ms. Marani had a question if you'd like to return.
Sorry? It's okay. I just wanted to, thank you for that great idea, and I hope that we can consider that as a Board and administration. I also have a question. What can the Board and what can the administration do to make this transition from the Anderson Building to the Crawford Building easier for the staff that you supervise at Anderson?
I think just be ready to be supportive, whether that's, you know, some extra contract days to help with the heavy lifting. There's a huge challenge ahead of us, and we need to be ready to support staff in moving classrooms and just being ready to support, getting them ready for the fall. There's a lot of logistics that need to happen in a very short timeframe, and to make sure our morale is ready for the fall, it's going to have to start now. And supporting teachers and getting ready for kids with their stuff in place in the new building, wherever that might be. But we need to think about morale in the fall here in the spring. It's really important to be ready for kids by fall.
May I follow up?
Sure. And Mr. Dorn also has a question.
Real quick. And would you recommend or encourage Board members to visit Anderson?
I would love that. I think it would be very insightful to come see the logistics that will have to happen, see the technology that has to move, see the amount of, see the artwork. What do we do with the artwork in the buildings? Where does that move? See the amount of curriculum that needs to move. This is not going to be an easy, easy, easy job for any of us. And I think being in person, visiting the buildings, go over to Crawford and see what that's going to look like. And then obviously, Nordell, Joy, we're real people getting ready to do a really challenging job. And I would encourage all of you to be out in the buildings and talking with staff as to what their needs are.
Thank you so much. Mr. Dorn?
Thank you, Ms. Stancell, for coming tonight. And I will say that I will be out, and I've enjoyed my regular visits out to your school and with your staff and students and yourself, so thank you very much for that welcome. Could you help us understand a little bit, in some ways, and I'll be talking broadly, maybe stereotypically, Ielson is a community of its own. And so Anderson and Crawford are two parts of that community, but they're also integral to that whole community. Could you shed any, some light on perhaps the joining of the Anderson-Crawford community and also the distinction, the uniqueness that each provides within the base atmosphere? Does that make sense?
Shed light on the potential combining, what that's going to look like, or?
Okay, I guess in some ways, if I might look at Ielson as a community where it's under consideration to join two of the schools within the same community, whereas many of our other schools are in their own communities. I have experienced some of the uniqueness of the community of Anderson, the community of Crawford. There's obviously a big tie because you have brothers and sisters, cousins, et cetera. But could you talk a little bit or shed a little bit of light on what we should be considering, what that, what changes would that blend if that happens? That has not been decided yet by the Board, but if it is, as opposed to saying, oh, they're just moving within the same community?
Some of the changes that come to mind, I mean, first and foremost, just the impact as two staff now unite and two staff that have been, you know, I mean, they're vastly different populations. You have a primary staff and then upper elementary. Combining those staff, I see, will be challenges within itself, unique opportunities to combine primary and upper elementary. Looking from a parent's perspective, it's now one building, but with that becomes potentially a couple hundred more cars at dismissal time, drop-off, and pickup. However, other buildings are doing this, but it's unique to us at this point. So thinking through drop-off and pickup times, primary to an upper elementary school, we need to consider our playground equipment that needs to be moved over to the upper elementary school. Our equipment is age-appropriate, and so that's going to be a huge challenge, but necessary for that facility. And I think just overall, I haven't had parents coming in and, you know, greatly concerned about this, but just overall, that piece of siblings now will be within the same building. It will be more convenient for parents from that perspective. But like I mentioned, they love our primary atmosphere. They loved the idea that they have, you know, two, three years to focus on our literacy skills, building those strong foundations, and not that that can't carry over into Crawford, and it will, however, it's just going to be a vastly different change to that community and what we've known.
Thanks for those insights.
Sure.
And for your leadership down at Anderson over these years.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony and for returning for questions.
Thank you.
Our next testimony is Mr. Ryan Hinton. Thank you. If you could spell your last name and state your place of residence.
Hi, Ryan Hinton, H-I-N-T-O-N. I live in North Pole, Alaska. I would like to preface my comments by first stating that this is not a rebuke of ESA, FEA, their presidents, or the right of individuals to form a collective and advocate for their interests. While I may disagree with them, when their private interests run contrary to my own, I fully support their right to assemble and advocate for their interest as guaranteed by the First Amendment. This is a petition for address of grievances, which is also protected under the First Amendment. My grievance is this: On page 77 of the approved FY22 budget, $110,000 is allocated for the FEA and ESA president positions. People have a right to form a collective and elect representatives, but it is not right to compel those outside of that collective to pay for that representation. This compulsory contribution to organizations that do not represent us nor are obligated to advocate for our interest is done through the allocation of our tax dollars. The government is taking property from everyone in order to benefit a select group. This is what Frederick Bastiat referred to as "legal plunder." Justice Alito, in the decision of Janus, wrote, "Compelling a person to subsidize the speech of other private speakers raises similar First Amendment concerns." As Jefferson famously put it, "To compel a man to furnish contributions of money for the propagation of opinions which he disbelieves and abhors is sinful and tyrannical." Because the compelled subsidization of private speech seriously impinges on First Amendment rights, it cannot be casually allowed. I also take issue with the fact that the district funds these positions while making budget cuts year after year. As you are acutely aware, all of these cuts and reductions impact students in the district, and the district is in a no-win situation of choosing which ones will hurt the least. ESA and FEA would not cease to advocate for the representative bargaining groups if the district no longer funded these president positions. By all indications, ESA and FEA possess the resources to pay for their own representatives. The district paid them $1,355,000 last year, presumably dues collected on their behalf.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hinton. That is your two minutes. Do any Board members have any questions for Mr. Hinton? Mr. Sampson?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Hinton, thank you for your time. Can you expand on the dollar amount that you're referring to? I didn't quite catch that. Thank you.
Yes, so the, what the district has allocated or the, what the district has paid the unions?
I suppose any dollar amounts that you have, thank you.
Okay, so for the FY22 budget, we've allocated $110,000 for the FEA and ESA president positions. And then last year, for the fiscal year, the district paid $1,355,000 to ESA and FEA. Now, that would include, assuming that is primarily dues collected on the union's behalf.
You can follow up?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Can you clarify dues collected on the union's behalf?
From my understanding, the district collects dues for the union out of paychecks. I'm not sure, I'm not a part of the union. It was just what was provided in the Freedom of Information request.
My question is, who pays for that? Out of whose account?
I'm not sure which account it's coming out of, sir.
Does the school district pay for that, or does the unions pay for that?
No, this is money coming from the school district to the unions. I'm not sure which account.
Thank you.
Mr. Dorn?
Are you aware of the fact that the dues that are basically passed through the district to the associations are actually agreed to by the members?
Yes, sir.
So they have pre-approved that, to have that as a, basically, if you want a service, as a deduction, and then that is passed? It is not district money, it is individual money?
Oh, yes, sir. And to that point, I'm not suggesting that that is coming out of the general fund. I understand that's coming from, deducted from their paycheck. It's same as like, you know, they got to pay their cable bill, or however else they wanted to use their paycheck. My point being there is that the, the unions, they're collecting $1.3 million in dues, then there's no reason they can't pay for their own representation, why the district should have to pick up $110,000 for these positions.
Thank you for.
If I could continue? I just, I have two other, just quick clarifications. The fact that that is a shared cost, the unions, the associations do pay the other half of those positions, and that's shared because of the mutual responsibilities and portmanship that the district and those associations have agreed to in contract.
I'm not sure I understand the question, sir.
That that's a shared cost. The associations also pay for the, the half for those two positions?
Yes, sir. I'm aware that each position is a half FTE, that the, so the district pays, according to their, according to the CBAs, the district pays for it, and then we're reimbursed for half an FTE for each one. So it would still be, so we still have one FTE that's coming from taxpayer dollars.
Okay. And the clarification that I wanted at the beginning, if I caught your comment correctly, you're concerned, since you're an exempt employee and not member of the associations, you are not paying any dues into that or any of those costs. You are concerned as a taxpayer that in essence, some small amount, in essence, is being used as it would be in any expenditure of the district?
Yes, sir. My primary concern is that's a tax. My primary concern is as a taxpayer, that my tax dollars are paying for a position that doesn't represent my interests.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time, Mr. Hinton.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Anderson had enough.
So, Mr. Hinton, I'm kind of confused because as a district employee, you said this is not about you being an employee of the district. This is about you being a taxpayer. And you're taking issue that a relationship that has been beneficial to the district and to staff. I'm, I'm just confused.
Okay, ma'am. If I can clarify, so primarily, it's the use of my tax dollars and everyone's tax dollars who aren't represented by this. So that's the compelled speech portion of it. But I am affected when the interests run contrary to my own. The, so as an employee, we, we do run into situations where, like, yes, they advocate, the, the union, they're going to advocate for their interest, and like I said, I have no problem with that. That's their right to do so, but when the district has created a not equitable situation where those interests run contrary to other private interests within the district, so take, for example, we, the, the repeated claim, we're about to hit the, the budget season, and like, we hear it quite often, I know we heard it last year from one of the president positions, that we need to make cuts from downtown. So I would argue that that runs contrary to the interests of many people, including this, like, the whole community, because that claim is made in ignorance of what actually goes on here at the downtown offices. But the, you know, to save us some time, because I could speak all night to that, and we're not here to talk about the budget, the, specifically, that's, that runs contrary to the interest of the people who are about to be cut. When you have that group advocating for cuts being made downtown, you have a position that is paid for by our tax dollars, that is arguing for our positions to be cut. The, the district has subsidized one of those speeches. They haven't subsidized the other, the minority party.
Thank you. I will take another question from Mr. Hinton, but I just want to remind the board members that Mr. Hinton's not necessarily on trial. And, you know, if we could just make sure that we have a direct question for him, not necessarily defending our own thoughts or positions about this statement that he is making.
Yeah, sorry. I know brevity is not my strong suit, so I'll try to keep it brief.
Ms. Anderson, did you have a follow-up?
I'm good.
Ms. Matheson, did you have a question? Okay. Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Mr. Hinton.
Thank you.
The next testimony signed up is Ms. Pamela Gum. Thank you, Ms. Gum. If you could spell your last name for the record and state your place of residence. You'll have two minutes.
Gum, G-U-M, North Pole, Alaska. Good evening. Please consider keeping our Anderson Elementary School doors open. I've verified behavior intervention, which includes implementing positive behavior intervention supports, PBIS, social emotional learning, SEL, and school-wide support for over 12 years. I'm speaking tonight as an advocate for the 263 students we have, as well as all that have walked through our halls. I've worked in many schools in this district and can absolutely tell you that our program is so incredibly unparalleled to how we teach our students and how our students learn. Anderson is unique as it is the only K-2 early childhood education program in the district. At the beginning of this process, we were told that the community and culture won't change, just the walls you teach in will. This isn't true. We're successful because of the exclusive K-2 setting that we have. Anderson is not only a safe environment to foster the growth and development of tiny humans, but for first-time parents to learn what their role is in their child's education. We achieve this by maintaining a high emphasis with SEL. By prioritizing it, we've observed both greater self-argulation in our students and more active engagement in learning. We have the opportunity to spend time on important skills that you cannot achieve in the, at the same level in a larger setting. We have a strong PBIS program. Anderson is synonymous with PBIS. This was obtained through years of consistent implementation. It's more than just giving feedback in a positive way. It's about building a positive learning experience for both teachers and students. It's about data and adjusting based on that data. It's knowing you can come to school and have a safe place to just be until you're ready to learn. Our success in PBIS is evident not only in our lack of discipline referrals and suspensions, but in the academic success and resiliency of our students. This took years to reach. By moving us to a school that hasn't achieved that same level of implementation sets us back and be a disservice to our students. As you continue to gather information to make the best informed decision, please understand that there are emotions and real people attached to those decisions, and know that our students will be most impacted by the decision you make on February 1st.
Thank you, Ms. Matheson.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions? Ms. Matheson?
Thank you so much, Mrs. Gum. You explained what SEL was, but I didn't quite get what PBIS is.
PBIS is our Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Our next person for testimony will be David Delong. Ms. Tuttle, was he able to?
Hello. Hello, this is David Delong, 2401 Cordis Road, and I would just like to urge the board to reconsider the mask mandate reinstated. We're back in the thick of things. This is a respiratory transmitted disease. Masks provide some protection to the wearer, but mostly they prevent people from expelling the virus if they happen to be infected and reducing the distance that the virus travels on the droplets in the air. When you stand outside in the cold day and you see the moisture, the condensation coming out from your voice, that is what it's traveling on. So if you wear a mask, you stop that. So let's get smart. Freedom isn't free. It's uncomfortable. My son is at West Valley. You know, it's not going to affect, well, it is going to affect me if he comes home with it, you know, and, and I'm fully vaccinated, but I mean, compromised, and there are other people like that in the community, so we need to think about everyone. So thank you very much. Maybe you can take that up at your next meeting or as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delong. Does any of the board members have any questions for Mr. Delong? Seeing none, we will move on to our next person for testimony, and Kennedy?
Thank you so much. If you could just spell your last name and state your city of residence.
Thank you. K-E-N-N-E-D-Y, North Pole, Alaska. I'm the school counselor at Crawford and Anderson Elementary Schools on Isle of Cenere Forest Base. I'm not here to contest the closing of Anderson. I simply want to honor the present and the history of Anderson Elementary by taking a moment to highlight how much joy that building has held for so many. Anyone that has interviewed with our principal knows her final question: Why Anderson? Many of us answer with the idea of supporting and educating our military students. Once a person settles into their position, though, and begins to feel the culture at Anderson, we find the answer encompasses more. Why Anderson? Because of the wise leadership, the dedicated, creative, knowledgeable, and spirited staff, the appreciative and supportive parents, and of course, the students who are excited to begin their educational journey and are already far more resilient than they can comprehend. Gathering in that building Monday through Friday becomes a shared joy. Now collectively, we in the Anderson Elementary community are asking, why Anderson? Just as with other challenges we face, we face it together. Our military community knows that a permanent change of station or PCS isn't easy, but it's been determined necessary for the mission. I see this PCS for Anderson Elementary similarly. Our professional lives will be packed up and moved to a new location, and while we have important, we have hope for positive change in our new location, we also recognize the end of a very important season that we've shared. Not only those presently employed, but our predecessors as well. When I encounter previous staff members of Anderson Elementary, joy still floods their faces when reflecting on their time there. I'm thankful to be part of the era that Anderson Elementary existed, and I'm honored to be among the people to have worked there. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Any board member questions? Mr. Dorian?
Just a quick one. You mentioned that you are shared half and half between Anderson and Crawford. Is that correct? Are other colleagues of yours shared half and half between those two schools?
Yes, there are specialists and other staff, such as the speech therapist and other interim like that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other questions? Next person for testimony is Robert Herrick.
Hello, my name is Robert Herrick, H-E-R-R-I-C-K. I live in Fairbanks, and we have a third grader in Pearl Creek. I wish to express my disappointment in the efficiency operations, or the efficiency options processes that has been conducted so far. So far, we've really only been given two viable options: close Randy Smith Middle School or move all of the sixth graders into middle school. We've, I don't feel been given a full accounting on what some of the other options were that were considered and rejected, and why those were rejected. I also wish to say that I think the survey results that, from the parents favoring moving sixth graders to middle school should be considered valid only in the context of parents now wishing to close Randy Smith Middle School. So far, the district, in terms of answering input and questions, have chosen what questions they wish to answer without listing the questions and input that they, that they've received, but not commented or answered on. I maintain that a better option for our particular school district would be to maintain the sixth graders in their neighborhood schools and then move the, fill up the middle schools by moving in ninth graders rather than sixth graders and making the high schools grades 10 through 12, and then consider shuttering one of the smaller high schools or shuttering wings of the two larger high schools. As a final thought, I think the high schools are going to be the easiest buildings to repurpose because they are buildings designed for full-sized humans and they have a lot more parking because they're designed for students that can drive. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Are there any questions from the board? I don't see any questions for you, Mr. Herrick. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Our next testimony is from Dr. Danielle Jones.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak with you today. I am Dr. Danielle Jones, J-O-N-E-S. I'm a Texan physician, board certified in OB-GYN and gynecology. First off, I would just like to say thank you to the teachers who recognized a gap in the sex education curriculum and brought science-based and accurate information in front of the board to be considered. That being said, I would like to say that I neither requested nor was informed that my content, my educational videos were being used or considered, or even having public discourse surrounding them. So in the future, I would encourage you to inform educators and content creators if you are considering their information, just so that they can be aware and be involved in that process if needed. My goal in attending today, though, is not because I have any vested interest in my videos being used for this purpose. I educate plenty well on my own, but I did notice some misinformation about what comprehensive sex ed is during the last meeting and also in the discourse surrounding the last meeting, and I just wanted to go over a few things that I think are really important, being a mother myself. Comprehensive sex education is not teaching the technical aspects of sex. This is a means of teaching sex ed in the same way that you would teach math, starting with basic body part names in elementary school and gradually progressing in a non-stigmatizing way. And what this does is that when you have discussion, which is normalized, and understanding, which is normalized, then sex stops being some alluring dark secret to seek out and starts being a part of normal life that should be taken very seriously. I would like to point out that this still encourages abstinence. That is a key component of comprehensive sex ed. And we have data to drive these conversations. The data shows that comprehensive sex education reduces rates of sexual activity in teens, lowers risk-taking behaviors in teens, and lowers rates of teen pregnancy and STR. I noticed in the news recently that there was a baby abandoned in severe weather conditions in your community, and I would like to point out also that comprehensive sex ed provides teens and young adults with the information they need to access, resources if they find themselves in a situation where it's needed, including safe haven laws and what to do if they find themselves in a situation with a child they cannot care for.
Thank you. Dr. Jones, that would be your two minutes. I appreciate your time. Does the board have any questions? Ms. Maradi?
Thank you, Dr. Danielle Jones. If the material comes back to the board for approval, which I believe it should, would you be able to be involved in that conversation?
I'm certainly happy to if I can. I'm currently coming off of 36 hours of delivering babies, so if my schedule allows, I'd be happy to be involved if I can.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the board? Seeing none, thank you for your time, Dr. Jones. The next person available for testimony is Rebecca McGuire.
My name is Rebecca McGuire, M-C-G-U-I-R-E. I live in Fairbanks, and I have three children in the schools. I am testifying during the non-agenda items part of the meeting because despite the problems we are experiencing due to COVID-19, you have not put anything on the agenda to address this problem. I will outline a few of the problems for you. Student attendance is dropping sharply. On Friday, it was at 83%, which is the lowest it has been since September. Kids are out sick. The district reported 318 COVID cases just last week, and I think it went up a lot more this afternoon, which is more than all of the second quarter. Self-reported cases. We know it's more. On January 14th, there were 114 staff absences not filled by a substitute, 260-some total. That is a jump of almost 100 from the day before. Teachers are out sick. All schools are using admin, counselors, and staff to sub and are still sending whole classes to the library to sit. There were 18 staff and teachers out at Joy Elementary on Friday. This is not equality education. There is no plan or guidance given to school principals as to what conditions qualify for moving school to heightened protocol. Some schools have moved to heightened protocols at the principals' discretion. At the start of the school year, when the mask mandate was established, cases in the schools dropped rapidly while cases in the borough continued to rise. Masks worked. Please reinstate universal masking. And send out emails with actual information in them. Promote vaccination clinics. I would remind you that you are leaders. It's your job to address challenges and make difficult decisions. Keep our children and our teachers healthy and in school, learning and teaching.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Does any, do any of the board members have any questions? Ms. Matheson? And I'll just remind you to make sure that you And I'll just remind you to make sure that you do have a question.
I do.
Comment. Thank you.
I'd like to know where you got all of these statistics.
It's easy to look at the school dashboard for how many COVID cases there are in the district that are self-reported. You can check there, too. You can do a request to find out how many staff absences are filled or not filled. You could easily do that yourself. Or you could ask Ms. Mellon, she has this information. If you have any contacts with Joy Elementary, you'll know how many staff and students were out there on Friday. You could easily get all this information. I found it myself in a few minutes.
Right, but I'd like to know where you found it.
On the internet.
Dashboard, but you were talking about, did you go to Joy Elementary and ask?
Oh, no, I'm friends with parents that go there and...
So you didn't go or you didn't call anyone at Joy? You just gave us numbers about 18 staff didn't show up on Friday? You don't know if it's concrete?
No, I don't. Would you like to check?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time. The next person for testimony is Rachel Reed.
Hello, my name is Rachel Reed, last name is R-E-A-D. And I'm here to talk to you about closing Joy Elementary. And the reason I'm doing this is because I have a special education child that attends Joy Elementary. And my problem is this. You are choosing to close Joy. Every option that you have provided is close Joy. However, Joy is ranked 271 out of the 461 schools in the state. You have three other Title I schools that are ranked lower than Joy. You're choosing to keep one other school open that is ranked 356 out of the 461 schools. They have an attendance rate of 91.7%. Furthermore, their map testing and reading has dropped 23.8% since 2016. Their map testing and math has dropped 33% since 2016. But you want to close Joy, whose map testing and reading, yes, it's dropped, but only 10.2%. Their map testing and math has dropped 9%. So you want to take these kids from a higher ranking school and send them to a school that's lower ranking. But you're worried about their education. You're worried about them progressing academically. Not only that, but there's a huge issue with the busing. And if you close Joy, all those kids that walk to school that are in Joy's district, how are they going to get to Ann Ween? How are they going to get to Denali or Hunter or wherever you decide to send them? Or am I going to get told the same excuse that I've been told time and time again? The state of Alaska has no mandate for transportation. I had to fight tooth and nail to get my special education son on a bus, to get him to school, to get him on his regular schedule. And it's not fair to him or any of the kids.
Thank you so much, Ms. Reed. That is your two minutes. Do any of the board members have a question? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next person for testimony is Tamara Kraus Rosellis. Is she available online, Ms. Tuttle?
Hello, this is Tamara Krause Rosellis, K-R-U-S-E-R-O-S-E-L-I-U-S, Fairbanks, Alaska.
Thank you, you have two minutes.
Okay, thanks. The chief administrator sent an email this week saying, "I am looking forward to seeing children with their peers engaging in meaningful learning." However, we have schools in our district operating with 40 to 50% of staff out. Is this meaningful learning? My son's high school uses counselors, admin, all available staff to sub, and still sends entire classes to the library to sit. Is this meaningful learning? Teachers are sick. Data from last week shows 263 absences in a day, and 202 of those are unfilled positions. Can meaningful learning occur? What is our goal? The administration states learning, but without using all available mitigation and with so much staff out, schools are turning into holding places, not learning places. Is just getting kids into the buildings really enough? Is that our goal? As parents, admin, and board, we must ask what more we can do. And look at student absences. We had 89% attendance in December with masking, and we have 83% and dropping now without. January 10th through 15th, we had 348 cases in our schools, and that's only self-reported. Add in staff numbers, and our numbers out totaled over 500. And if cases increase this week by the same rate they increased last week, our district will have over 900 cases out. What can we do in this impossible situation? Look back to the start of the year. When we introduced masking in September, cases went down from 138 the week before enacted to 17 end of December. When we removed universal masking in January, cases were back to 110 immediately. Now, an increase of 294% since then. At this rate, schools will close. On the district site, you're encouraging all to follow the guidance of public health. Are you doing the same? I ask that you call an emergency meeting to consider what other mitigation protocols are available. The board's policy of introducing additional mitigation only after schools have so much COVID they have to move into heightened protocol is not proactive, responsible leadership. The virus changed and our mitigation...
Thank you. That's your two minutes.
Thank you.
Do any board members have any questions? Ms. Maradi?
Actually, I just wanted to correct a previous testimony or question about it. It was, where did the 18 come from? I actually spoke with the principal at Joy, and it was 40% of the staff were absent. I'm not sure if that's 18 staff, but that's where...
Thank you, Ms. Maradi. We're just going to try to focus on asking our testifiers direct questions during this time.
I got that same information, and that's where I got it, from the principal of Joy.
Thank you so much for your reply. Do any board members have a direct question for the testifier? Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
The next person for testimony is Jen Gunderson.
Hello. Hi, I'm Jen Gunderson, G-U-N-D-E-R-S-O-N, and I live in Fairbanks. I'm testifying tonight to present a petition that has been created for Karen Maline and the school board. The people who have signed this petition are requesting a return to universal masking as soon as possible. So far, we have 390 signatures. I went through the list, and 362 are local residents. So probably 362 is an accurate number. I'm happy to send a spreadsheet with the signatures and comments to the board and Karen Maline. And I just want to say that I appreciate what the district is doing with the heightened protection protocols in certain classrooms where case numbers are high, specifically the testing and mandatory masking. I imagine that that is a difficult task. However, given the transmissibility of the Omicron variant and the fact that masking isn't universal right now, I think the case numbers will soon grow exponentially. And I don't understand how district staff and principals are going to be able to keep up with monitoring all the classrooms in the entire district, especially given the workload of everyone. I think if you implemented universal masking, the transmission in schools would go down, which would lower the workload of those people managing the heightened protection protocols. And those people will be able to spend their time doing other important work that needs to be happening. And lastly, I just want to thank all the teachers and staff in our district. You are really appreciated.
Thank you so much. Do any board members have any questions for Ms. Gunderson? And I'll just remind you, Mr. Sampson, to make sure it's a direct question for the testifier.
Yes, Madam President, thank you. Ms. Gunderson, thank you for spending your time coming to the board meeting and testifying. You asked if, if there's a request for that list. I just wanted to make a request. I'm asking, my question is, would you be so kind as to send that list to the district? Thank you.
Yes, I'd happily allow.
Thank you so much. Are there any further questions? No further questions, Ms. Gunderson, thank you. Our next person to testify is Christine St. Pierre or possibly Brad St. Pierre. Do we have one of them?
Yes, this is Christine St. Pierre.
Thank you so much.
As, my last name is spelled S-T-space-P-I-E-R-R-E, and I live in Fairbanks. I'm testifying today about the school efficiency proposal. I just want to ask you to consider our students, especially our fourth and fifth graders that will be greatly affected by this proposal. They have already been through a huge amount of challenges to their education. They were taken up their classes partway through their third grade year, doing at-home learning for most of their fourth grade year. And then you're asking them to have one year back in their neighborhood school and have to go into a middle school, which is a much different environment from a neighborhood school. This is a huge social, emotional, or will have huge social, emotional effects on these children. They're already struggling. It's already known that they have a gap in their education from all the disruption they've experienced. And this will just add to that. I know that there's hard budget choices to make, but to ask students who are already falling behind due to circumstances, to ask them to make another huge change like this is, is too much. Please consider other options, especially those students that will be leaving closed schools, the fourth graders. You know, it's just a huge thing to ask for them. And I feel like it's hurried. There hasn't been much time for the community to digest this huge proposal. We also know that middle schools have more discipline issues. There's more fights.
Thank you so much, Ms. St. Pierre. That is your two minutes. Do any board members have a direct question for Ms. St. Pierre? Mr. Doran?
Thank you, Ms. St. Pierre. Are you, one is to keep in mind, if I understood what you said correctly, keeping the K-6 structure for the elementary in the Fairbanks area. And if there was a change where six moved to middle, you want us to make sure that we are very cognizant of the, the learning gaps or disruptions that have taken place over the last two years, which would apply also for current sixth graders going to seventh. So both, both those, am I correct in understanding what you said there?
Yes, you are correct in understanding. And please consider that for fifth graders, this additional disruption would be three of their seven years of elementary education being disrupted, and for fourth graders, half. So yes, please consider the drastic effects that this will have on their social, emotional, and their educational well-being.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from the board? Thank you. The next person, Ms. Tuttle, do we still have time? Yes, okay. The next person that we have is Nancy Mazurek.
Hi, my name is Nancy Mazurek, M-A-Z-U-R-E-K, and I live off College Road near the university. And I've learned more tonight than I need to, than what's on these pieces of paper about COVID issues. And I've also learned to realize how many issues you as a board are dealing with, and it's a heck of a lot, more than I can imagine. So I'm just going to ask you to do one thing tonight, and that's first things first. And our children are at risk, and our staff members are at risk. And I think before, before you consider other things, protect our children. Protect our families. Protect people and get kids back in masks. That's, that's all I have to say. Let's get, do something and get kids back in masks. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Do any board members have any questions? Thank you. And our final pre-signed-up testimony is Caroline Brown.
Thank you. My name is Caroline Brown. My last name is spelled B-R-O-W-N, and I live in Fairbanks. I'd like to address a few non-agenda items. First, but only briefly, is the COVID mitigation. You've heard several times tonight about the concerns with COVID spread. And I would just like to add my voice to that and point out that there remains a dearth of details about the mitigation plan. There is no transparency. We have no idea what the metrics are for how bad this needs to be before we even consider change. If parent choice is important about where they choose or how they choose to have their children educated, they need information to do that. It needs to be transparent. Secondly, and this is where I'd like to spend my time tonight, I am really concerned about teacher and staff burnout and morale. It wasn't great before COVID, but the current situation has really underlined the problem. Last Friday, there were 115 unfilled absence requests. That's a lot for our district, and that's a lot for each school to deal with. These are real people trying to educate our kids without the resources they need. The subpoole appears to be at capacity, even as total requests continue to rise. I've been privileged to sit in on every single school board meeting since the beginning of the school year, and I've yet to hear any meaningful discussion of the current strain on our teachers and staff. And next to the kids themselves, teachers are, and the staff are our greatest resource as a district. And there are a lot of teachers out there who feel unheard and unsupported. And the need to replace experienced teachers will compound the district's financial woes as if we continue to ignore the problem. And we do so at our peril. Thank you.
Does the board have any questions? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who's present in the boardroom?
Vice President Smith, that is time.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm sorry, we do not have time for further testimony. Moving forward, we have, it looks like, our new business item, our annual audit report. And our goal and objective is to ensure student, staff, families, and the community are informed, connected, and engaged with the district. The school district's fiscal year 2020...
Excuse me.
Yes.
We have Borough Assembly reports.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Is someone online from the borough for that report?
No, they're not.
Okay, thank you.
So are you ready for Chief School Administrator report?
I'm ready for Chief School Administrator report. I'm so sorry, Karen.
No, that's okay.
Turned the page, and the page was not to be turned. We'll hear from our Chief School Administrator for her report. Thank you.
Okay, so a few things for updates. First, our transportation. Since late November, we've been restoring routes to full service. The latest addition happened January 10th, when we were able to restore four routes to full service. We're currently running 54 fully restored routes across the district. 30 of those are sped routes, 21 are full, regular, full-schedule routes. And 46 regular routes are still on a...
and 46 regular routes are still on a weekly rotation. So each day, we're running about 74 routes. We're looking to restoring even more soon. We have a few regular drivers who are participating in a training to become fully certified testers in the state. And this is to expedite the process of moving applicants to full certification. And one of the really encouraging things about the transportation scene is that we continue to get applicants and they continue to move through the pipeline. So we're having resources, and not all school districts across the country are experiencing that kind of applicant, applicants still coming in. So I feel really, really encouraged by that. And a lot of this is due to the efforts of Durham and their partnership with us. The other thing I'd like to address in my report is budget. We're working through the final stages of preparing our proposed budget. As we're all aware, this year, as budget challenges are real, and there are a number of decisions that will impact the final decisions on the proposed budget. But regardless of any decisions that are made, there still will be difficult fiscal decisions ahead of us. The next topic will be our COVID update. Like other places around the world, we're experiencing another wave of COVID cases in our community and in the district. At the beginning of the school year, the board approved maintaining in-person learning during COVID-19 plan. That plan includes using all of the tools we have to slow down the spread of the virus. Two of those tools are testing and masks. We have been implementing that plan and improved it by increasing our ability to offer tests, for at-home tests for families. And that's in addition to our three physical testing sites. Our plan has three, has levels one through four. Level three is our modified operations, which, as you can read in the document, modified operations may include limiting gathering, group gatherings, increasing cleaning of high-touch areas, minimizing student movement as much as possible in the building, conducting PE outdoors when possible, and/or a heightened protection protocol. So heightened protection protocol happens when there is a high likelihood that the transmission is within a group or a classroom. So the evidence that we're giving it to each other is when we would implement a heightened protection protocol. The purpose of that is to interrupt the spread of the virus within the group. At this point, students in that group are expected to wear a mask and upon parental approval, participate in surveillance testing. Again, the whole purpose of this process is to interrupt the transmission among the group. On the COVID dashboard, you can see that we have a number of students and groups that are in modified operations. We'll continue to use masks and testing to manage the latest wave so we can continue to offer in-person learning as an option for our students and family. We have experienced an increase of teacher and staff absences. Not all absences are due to COVID. There are a myriad of other reasons why teachers are out. But how, to this date, building leaders have shown incredible leadership in managing staff absences. Staff at the district office level have been available in situations that a principal feels they're unable to manage. I was afforded the privilege to be support in a kindergarten classroom at Joy on Friday for a portion of the day. And it was a welcome reminder of why I got into this profession, to be able to sit in a classroom of kindergartners. Really gave me an opportunity to refocus and recharge to why we do this work. And finally, in the report on our, just one thing, there's so many things happening academically in our district right now. But I just want to highlight that we had a group of educators here preparing for the first administration of the state's new statewide assessment, AKA STAR. The Teaching and Learning Department provided preliminary trainings on assessment, and will continue to prepare and plan as we move towards the testing window. This assessment represents a fundamental shift from what the state summative assessment used to be to moving into the future. There will be many professional development opportunities offered through the state, not only on this assessment, but overall assessment literacy and connection to assessments and instruction. And we are really looking forward to taking advantage of the advantages of those free resources offered by the state. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Do any board members have questions related to Ms. Maline's report? Ms. Maradi?
Thank you. Ms. Maline, I hear you say you're using masking. However, I think it is important to be transparent and explain to the community that you're only using masking after a breakout of cases, instead of using masking to prevent a breakout of cases. Also, I've reached out to principals, and many of them say that they're not being given guidance on how to initiate protocols. So I ask that we explain how schools can initiate heightened protocols when they feel it's necessary.
So if a building leader or a principal feels like that there is transmission happening within the building, they would consult with Assistant Superintendent LaPlante or Minert. They would look at the situation that's happening, look deeper into it, and say, is this a situation that we need to implement? One of the other, level three, do we need to move this building, this group into modified operations? What exactly is the story behind the cases? And there is a story behind each case. So they look at that carefully, and then they consult together and decide this is something we need to move on. And they make a recommendation to me, and together, we decide if this is a situation we need to do other mitigations, tools, or implement a heightened protection protocol.
Thank you so much. Mr. Rhodes, and then Ms. Matheson. I'm sorry, Mr. Doran. Mr. Doran?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Maline. A couple of questions. In conversations with Durham and with their efforts, which are greatly appreciated, but looking ahead, we're less than a year away for the start of the new school year, and we're just dribbling. We've really not made a lot of progress in roots on. But every step forward is a good step. Have you had conversation with them yet on their work to retain drivers, especially as we get to the end of this, towards later in the spring, and other seasonal jobs are coming? And to bring them back in time for the school year in August, after the summer break, when many of them would otherwise not be working, at least for Durham?
So your question is, have I had conversations with Durham about retention of drivers?
For next year. That's coming close.
I have not. I don't know, no. We haven't, as a district, looked at that yet. I know that Durham has a really aggressive retention. You know, they're trying to be as intentional as possible, but we haven't had any actual pointed conversations about what they're doing to retain the teachers that, or the, I'm sorry, the drivers that are being hired now.
Thank you. And maybe we can get some report from them later in the spring to that effect. And I will just reaffirm, since I was just outside for the last two weeks primarily camping, but yes, other districts across the South are having a difficult time with bus drivers as well. The, two other things, you want me to go with both of them, when it's pretty fast, at least? Okay. When I had looked at our district website about availability of testing, is it still the situation that someone has to go on the website to sign up for a testing kit? We have many parents who don't have internet connectivity, that type of thing. Why they couldn't just get them at the school? I know they can be picked up at the school once they register, but is there any reason when the schools couldn't just have them, people come in and get them?
Are you speaking of the at-home tests?
Yes.
There's no reason why they couldn't, if they were in the building, like the parents were in the building, were not sending them home with elementary school children, just for obvious reasons. But if a parent is in the building and would like to check into getting one, they could certainly do that, work through the office and the school nurse to get those at-home testing kits.
Thank you. And then my last question had to do with budget, and your reference to that tonight. But after listening to the work session from the 10th and realized that the budget is being delayed two weeks, kind of a question, a concern to consider is why a delay in the budget? I know some of our decisions are significant, but they're not that different from budget adjustments that come out of questions throughout the whole process. And I'm just concerned about delaying that, even though there may be changes in the budget throughout that process. So maybe just put that in the hopper and see where we go from there.
Is that, are you good with that? Okay. You want to speak to that or not? Well, yeah, well.
I can make a statement if you'd like.
Yeah, I think it's a good point to be made, and we'll take it.
Yeah, I think we need to have, the earlier we have the overall picture, though adjustments will be made, and we know we have to make some phasing cuts. There'll be some pros and cons and trade-offs as we go through the whole process. But I'm concerned about a two-week delay to get at least the overall picture.
Right. So part of the delay is in the budgeting process, printing books, getting it finalized. That takes a little bit of time. And that process is what's.
I'll jump in here, Ms. Maline. So the Budget Office was not in the position to assume, make any assumptions regarding what the Board of Education's final decision was going to be on February 1st. Having said that, the magnitude of the impact on the budget of closing three schools all at once is significant. And the turnaround time that it will require in order to, we're talking thousands and thousands of line items. So I think the bottom line, I guess, I hear your point, Mr. Doran. We just aren't in the position to make assumptions on what the board's going to do in advance and have a budget ready, like, right? And the magnitude of the work of doing two budgets at the same time is not realistic for us.
Thank you. You've heard my concern, I'm hearing yours, but my concern is still there because that same scenario plays right out until we do our approved budget to the, our recommended budget to the Borough Assembly.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. We do have a few more people who have questions regarding the superintendent report. Mr. Rhodes, did you still have a question? Okay, Ms. Matheson?
I would, thank you. I would like to ask Mr. Minert, Mrs. LaPlante, and Mrs. Maline if they feel that they're approachable. Do principals feel comfortable coming up to you and asking for guidance if they feel that they're not getting the guidance?
Sure, I'd be happy to speak to that. Both Kate and I talk to principals on a daily basis about our mitigation plans and moving in and out of the modified operations or heightened protection protocol. The modified operations has been in place since the beginning of the school year, and I'm confident most principals, if not all principals, understand how to move in and out of modified operations, given that we've been doing this on a regular basis.
And I would just add that I think that our district leadership with Mr. Minert and Ms. LaPlante and their relationship with the principals is really very collaborative, that principals seem to approach the leadership with any number of questions about school processes. But I think the communication is very good, and principals feel comfortable and confident approaching the administration about not only COVID mitigation, but a number of different things that go on in a building.
Is there a follow-up on this? Okay. So if Mrs. Maradi could give you the list of principals that don't feel this way, would you reach out and make sure that they do feel comfortable?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Ms. Maradi?
Ms. Maline, you said that you make the final decision for heightened protocols. Have you declined any requests? And if so, which schools?
No, I have not declined any requests.
Thank you. Are there any further questions for Ms. Maline? Thank you so much for your report, Ms. Maline. Now, we will move forward to our new business, the annual audit report. Our goal and objective is to ensure students and staff and families and the community are informed, connected, and engaged with the district. The school district's fiscal year 2020-2021 financial statement audit is complete. Nicole Nico Herbert, Director of Accounting Services, and Cara Moore, partner with Alliance CPAs LLC, will provide a brief overview of the audit. Can we have a motion?
Move to approve the FY 2020-2021 financial statement and auditor's report.
Second.
Thank you. And we'll hear a report from the administration, Ms. Maline.
At this time, I'll give the time to Nico Herbert to walk us through the audit.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm here along with Cara Moore, Partner of Alliance CPA LLCs. We're going to present the financial report for the fiscal year ending 2021. I'm going to touch on some highlights before I pass it over to Cara to report on the audit results. There is a name change coming to our annual financial report. Stakeholders brought to the attention of the community that the pronunciation of the old acronym sounds very much like a racial slur in South Africa and an Arabic word meaning unbeliever. So next year, this report will be called the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. I did want to note that this district did receive Certificates of Achievement for Excellence in Reporting for Fiscal Year 2020. From the Association of School Business Officials and the Government Finance Officers Association, these awards commend the district for the readability and organization of our audited financial statements. As part of our strategic plan for communication and engagement, we did develop a new supplemental Popular Annual Financial Report, which you do have at your desk. This is designed for those without a background in finance, but it does not replace our audited financial report, nor is it audited by our Alliance CPA LLC. It includes highlights of selected district funds that we want to bring the attention to, high-level details. So we start off specifically with General Fund, which is our main operating fund. Here, you can see that General Fund lost about 8.5 million revenue, primarily due to enrollment loss. If we analyze the expenditures of General Fund, by function, we spend 81% of our expenses, or 81% of our expenses can be directly tied to supporting schools and those students in those schools. If we analyze the expenditures by type in General Fund, we can see that 88% of our expenditures are related to salary and benefits. General Fund is capped at the amount of fund balance it can accumulate per state statute. For fiscal year 2021, For fiscal year 2021, our percent was zero, meaning that all of our General Fund balance is planned to be spent in the future years. This conflicts with Board Policy 412, which expects that that percentage is between 6 and 8%, roughly $14 to $16 million. I did want to clarify that the state statute is different from Borough Code. Borough Code accumulates all of our fund balances and then backs out certain things per their Assembly Code. So that total was 5.9 million last year, but I want to point out that the monies in the internal service funds can't be easily repurposed for other things because those are charges to people for services that we plan to provide to them or have already provided to them. So it'd be similar to you paying your GBA bill and them applying it to your neighbor's account and turning off your electricity. Moving on to other key funds that I wanted to highlight was student transportation. Revenue decreased about 2.3 million and that's because student transportation is also funded by student enrollment. A nutrition service fund decreased $965,000 and that's due to the fact that because we were in remote learning, the number of students participating in school lunch decreased. Going back to the audited report, if you want more in-depth narrative explanations, that's included in the section called Management Discussion and Analysis. It's about 10 pages long. What I wanted to highlight there was the part that talks about the future budget impacts. Some of these points are going to be similar to points you've heard from Mr. DeGraw, our Chief Operations Officer. Things that were discussed that impacted the FY 22 budget that are going to continue to impact our FY 23 budget is the reduction in the foundation funding revenue, increases to salaries and health costs, and our student enrollment numbers. Additional items that we'll have to consider for our FY 23 budget is that we're anticipating to spend over half of our CARES funding by the end of this fiscal year. We're discussing currently our efficient use of school buildings and there was a 6% decrease in freeing reduced price meal eligible students, which can impact the amount of grant funding we receive. So that concludes my comments. I'm going to turn it over to Cara one last time. I want to thank her and Alliance CPA for everything they've done for SLU. I've worked with her for 10 years, even before the district. This is the last year that Alliance CPA will be our auditors. We are currently in the process of selecting new auditors alongside the Borough and IGU and that will, the recommendation should be going to the Assembly Finance Committee this week. So next year, I will be up here introducing you to our newest auditors. So I'll turn it over to Cara for the results of the audit.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody, for your time, as Nico said, one last time. It's a bit bittersweet for me. I've done work for the school district in the audit capacity for a long time and there will be a void in my life. But on to the business at hand. As Nico mentioned, my name's Cara Moore. I'm from Alliance CPAs and I wanted to report on the audit for you for the fiscal year end just past, June 30, 2021. I'll start by just giving you a brief rundown of, of the timing of the audit. We start in May. So last May, we came and we did what we call interim test work. We focused on testing of samples of transactions. We don't look at every single transaction, but we looked at samples in payroll, accounts payable, cash receipts, and other areas. And while we were doing that work, we were also busily documenting our understanding of the accounting processes and looking for any changes. And then we come in in August and did the year-end fieldwork. Or at least that's when it all started. Significant part of our audit process, as I mentioned, gaining an understanding of the internal controls and documenting that understanding. And we use that information to help us design and develop our audit process. Some internal controls, as you know, are built into the computer system. Some of them are manual and we want to understand what they are intended to do. And then we test to see if they are actually functioning the way they were intended. Our various audit reports are a result of all of this work. Some areas to call attention to in the soon-to-be-referred-to-as ACFER, the Annual Comprehensive, or for one last year, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Statement, is the Audit Opinion Report. That's the main report of the audit and it's on page one. This report is used to identify specifically what was audited and it also identifies management's responsibility for the accuracy of the financial statements and our responsibilities as auditors. For fiscal year 2021, based on audit procedures performed, we issued what is known as a clean or unmodified audit opinion on the financial statements, as we believe that they are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and materially correct. And we know the importance of this, particularly now with the financial situation being what it is, being able to maintain this level of attention of accounting staff to ensure the accounting process is well monitored and can be relied on, to be accurate, becomes more important to the district as you're making decisions about current and future operations. Another process that's included in our audit is referred to as single audit. In the back of the financial statements, you'll find the schedules of expenditures of federal grant awards and separately, the schedule of state grant awards that were expended by the school district during fiscal year 21. Our reports on results of the single audit procedures performed to test the district's compliance with requirements of the various grants are also located there. And I'm happy to say that no findings of non-compliance were identified. It's important to note that, and be aware of, the significance of the efforts necessary by the administration to ensure compliance with the grant requirements and how some of those efforts can be interrelated. Non-compliance can have a significant effect on the district's ability to maintain federal and state funding. It could also result in the district needing to pay back grant funding if it is determined that those funds are not expended as the granters intended. So having no findings is significant to the year that we audited and will affect you going forward, currently and in future years, with the, these grants that the school district is able to obtain. The other part of our audit is to issue some communications to the school board. We've issued a letter to the audit committee, which you should have all received, and that letter is intended to raise the high-level issues, if there were any, when we were performing the audit. It discusses the audit timelines and procedures and indicates that there were no difficulties or significant issues encountered while performing the audit, including working with your fine staff at the district. The last bit of communication as part of the audit process is the management letter, or otherwise known as the Communication of Internal Control-related Matters. This report indicates that we reviewed internal controls, as I discussed, over the financial reporting. We used that to design our audit. The report talks about the definition of what would be considered a deficiency or material weakness, which would cause management or employees to be unable to prevent a misstatement in the financial statements on a timely basis. We did not identify any material weaknesses as a result of our audit procedures. We also followed up on the status of recommendations we made as a result of the previous audit and we discussed that follow-up information in that report. We did not identify any new recommendations for improvement, which would also be something we would put in that report. With that, I will conclude one last time. Thank you very much for your time and attention this evening and for low these past few, several years for me. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Ms. Meline, did you have anything to add to that?
No, I don't. I just, I, I want to say my appreciation to those who've served the district faithfully in their auditing process. And I would also like to express my appreciation to Ms. Herbert for her diligence and attention to detail, gaining us a reputation as a district of, of excellence in this area.
Thank you so much. Do any of the members of the board have questions? Ms. Maradi and Mr. Doran?
I just wanted to note the additional experience that's been added to the accounting team and appreciation for that. I know that it was, it's been a concern for a while and I know that it's probably very helpful for Ms. Herbert and the, the continued fiscal excellence that you provide. And thank you, Ms. Moore, for your dedicated energy to our district and the borough. And I, I second the, the feelings from, that Ms. Herbert shared. We're going to miss having you on the team and hope, you have big shoes to fill. Hopefully, we can find someone.
It has been our pleasure.
Thank you. Mr. Doran, or do we need to go to public comment before Mr. Doran? Thank you. I'm sorry. Are there any members of the public who'd like to testify as we had no prior signups? Seeing none, we will return to the board. Sorry. Thank you. Mr. Doran?
Thank you and thank you both for the report and the good news that's included in there, as well as you noted that the one recommendation from last year was resolved this year, which again, just speaks well for the whole team. My question is, am I correct that once the audit is done, then that's when we look at whether we need to lapse any monies back to the borough from the fund balance? Is that correct?
That is correct. After we finalize our audit and it is applied on by the auditors, we make that calculation to determine if we have to send any money back to the borough.
Okay. And you may have had it up here. I thought I saw it, but I wasn't sure. Are we subject to any lapse this year?
We are not subject to lapse this year.
Great, thanks. We're in that eight, I believe if I found it correctly, we're in the 18 million, which is less than the 20. Is that correct?
It'll take us a while to get back up to where we said to the lapse.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sampson?
Thank you, Madam President. Oh, Ms. Moore, thank you very much. What's it been, 15, 20 years?
Uh, yeah, give or take.
It's a, it's a big, it, it's a, it's a long row. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a tough lift. Ms. Herbert, thanks a lot. The reputation of excellence that your team has, has brought is, is beneficial, but in addition to that, the ability to maintain the funds that we've been granted and the ability to have the opportunity to put in for funds in the future is, is probably of the utmost importance. And I just wanted to say thank you to, to Ms. Moore and also Ms. Herbert and your team. The compliance with the legal provisions in reference to the single audits, can you tell me what dollar amount do you suppose that represents? And I just say that because, as was mentioned, if the public missed it, our ability to maintain compliance with the legal provisions is what allows us to keep the money that was given to us and also allows us to get money in the future. And it lends itself to the importance to as much that being, being within compliance. So yourself and your team of, I believe it's one other person, what dollar amount is associated with specifically the single audits, a ballpark?
Well, you expended in FY 21, $35,999,420 of federal grant revenue. I'm just looking at the reports here. In, in terms of state dollars, you expended, and this does include the state's contribution to the PERS pension and TERS pension and OPEB funds. The total expenses there or expenditures, $134 million. So it's no small change. And it, it's important to know that when you're looking at these compliance requirements, some compliance requirements specific to one grant also determine the level of funding for another grant. And so that's the inner relationship that you want to be aware of when you're analyzing these financial statements is, you know, our student counts are, the poverty levels and things of that nature. Making sure you have accurate information there has a huge effect on these numbers that you're getting from the federal government and from the state for funding. And so being, being able to maintain compliance for that one grant where you're counting those students who are eligible for free or reduced lunch can have a significant impact way beyond that grant. And being able to maintain the compliance can get tricky. And so the fact that the school district has been able to do that and, and get what you might think as a clean report for your single audit purposes is no small feat.
Follow-up?
Yes, follow-up.
Maybe you can expand on that just a little bit. The complexity of one grant, one program, and how it affects another. It's not simply just Ms. Herbert and her team filling out paperwork so that we're in compliance with single audits. Just the complexity of having been there for, for the time that she has been there and the knowledge that she has. Can you just give us an example? You did with the student lunches. Maybe you can expand on that just slightly, how one program affects another.
Well, the student lunch situation, that free or reduced lunch measurement and ruler also determines poverty level for the school. And poverty level for the school can have an effect on the federal funding that you get. I'm trying to think of one specifically, one of your grants specifically. Your, your pupil counts, your student counts and the reports there can have an effect on multiple grants because the amount of money that you would get for some of the other grants is dependent on what your accurate student counts are. And so you maybe don't necessarily think of these as financial issues, as financial statement and numbers issues. But when you think about the amount of money that is being expended through these federal and state programs, it really is. And so when we're doing the audit and we're looking at the concept of monitoring, it's, it's the financial aspect and having enough manpower to be able to accurately track the, all of the activity that goes into the numbers. It's also important to have the folks who are monitoring the grants and ensuring that the school district as a whole is maintaining compliance with those requirements.
Thank you.
The one grant that comes to mind that's significantly impacted by the free and reduced price meals, student eligibility is Title 1A, and that is in federal programs with Carla McQuone. And I know that she keeps a really close eye on that percentage and how it's going to impact her grant funding the next year because they try to ensure that their students at those schools don't just receive those students at those schools don't just receive those services cut off instantaneously. And I warned her that this may come up tonight, if you guys want her to expand on that.
Ms. Matheson?
Earlier, you said that there was a 6% decrease in the free or reduced lunch. And does this, does this run close to, close to how many students have left the district?
As far as I'm aware, because of the federal waivers that provided free lunches no matter your status, students and families aren't submitting their direct applications, nutrition services. So a lot of students automatically qualify if they receive food stamps or qualify for Mignolet evento or are homeless. But there's a big gap of families who aren't filling out their free and reduced applications to qualify going into next school year for those meal prices. And that's what's causing the decrease.
I wanted to just add to that. Nico, this is Carla McQuone, the Executive Director of Student Support Services, and just say that I don't feel that families who do qualify for free and reduced lunch realize by filling out that paperwork and that application that it does directly impact our funding opportunity that Nico and the audit is referencing. That is really important information for our families all to hear. Although the direct service they see right away is the, is the free lunch at school through their meal program and nutrition services, it has such a larger impact that we're speaking about this evening. And I just wanted to say, speculatively, we, they are looking, the federal government is looking at this, the fact that the school lunch waiver has impacted all of our communities across the nation. And what will that look like for our future funding for our grants that are being discussed this evening in the audit? To the best of my knowledge, from a publication that came out on January 12, 2022, from the United States Department of Education, it does look like we will be able to use the best available national school lunch program data from the 2019, 2020 school year just prior to the pandemic. And those are the figures that we have been using for the past few years. Another available option is going to be to look at the 1920, the 2021, and the 2122 data and a combination of those. So districts are going to have some flexibility moving forward. We'll wait for official guidance from AKD for us, but that is as of last week. I just thought I'd share that with the team.
Thank you, Ms. McQuone. Any further questions from the board? Mr. Sampson?
This will be quick. Moving forward, talking in reference to the metrics that are used for future allocation of funds in regards to free and reduced lunches. You made mention of the reduction in our food services budget due to in-person, or should I say, non-in-person learning? Can you tell us, can you just reiterate what that dollar amount was that we lost out on last year for non-in-person learning in reference to the nutritional services? Ballpark.
So the impact to food service last year was when we were in remote learning, less students were onsite to participate. So even though that the amount that the federal government was reimbursing us was higher, we had less participation. So we went from collecting over $1 million from students to only $50,000 from students. So that's where that $900,000 decrease occurred.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Anything further from the board? And Ms. Maline, is there anything further?
Nothing further from the administration.
Thank you so much for your time and for your presentation and for all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. If possible, could I get copies of the comprehensive annual report back? I need to mail these off to the State of Alaska DED for compliance.
No, it's yours.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We just leave them on our desk, though they'll just be picked up at the end of the meeting. All right, Ms. Smith?
Thank you so much.
Ms. Smith, the vote?
Okay. Ms. Tuttle, could you call the vote?
Mr. Rhodes?
Did we have, did we have a motion?
Mrs. Anderson made it, and Mr. Sampson seconded.
Thank you.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Thank you. Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you. Moving forward with our agenda, our next item is Policy 542, Conditions of Employment, Job Descriptions, first reading. Our goals and objectives are workforce and organizational excellence, create an environment that supports the strengths and needs of staff so they can create a safe climate where students thrive. Policy 542, Conditions of Employment, Job Descriptions is before the board for first reading. Ivory McDaniel Ingriffitz, Executive Director of Human Services, is available for questions.
Move to approve first reading, public hearing, and advancement to second reading of Policy 542, Conditions of Employment, Job Descriptions.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this agenda item from anyone in the room? We have no one signed up online. Seeing none, we will have a presentation from Ms. Maline. For, are we, from Ms. McDaniels?
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe this to be a simple, hopefully undertaking for the board tonight. The intent of this language is to put into policy what our current practice is, and having job descriptions available to all of our staff through contacting the Human Resources Department opposed to being posted on the website. The maintenance of, maintaining the job descriptions on the website is a difficult task with our limited staffing and trying to create efficiencies in our own department. And we felt like this was one way that we could help streamline things, but also making job descriptions available to our staff upon request. One note is that job descriptions are provided upon hire for all of our new hires as well. But this is if you are a long-term employee and you're looking for your job description, that you would contact the Human Resources Department opposed to being posted on our website.
Thank you. Mr. Doran?
Just for the information of the board, this did go through policy committee, and the committee passed it on, very much in an understanding that this is the more appropriate way to make sure that staff and others who need to access job descriptions have the most recent and accurate one, and that the HR department gave a good thought in making sure that service is still there for staff. So the, the committee did pass this on to the board for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. Mr. Sampson?
Thank you, Madam President. A quick question, Ms. Ivory McDaniels. Does, do the appropriate unions also post the job descriptions that you know of?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the board? Thank you. Ms. Tuttle, can we call the vote?
Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you. We'll move on to information and reports. First, we have the Facilities Utilization Report. Our core value is student-centered, center everything we do on the student and student learning. The board held a work session on January 10, 2022, to review, discuss, and consider the School Efficiency Task Force recommendations and next steps. The board and administration will provide an overview of the board's work in consideration of its options.
Ms. Maline?
Yes, from the board work session on the 10th, after consideration of the documents and conversation with the administration, the board is considering, moving forward as the consolidation of Anderson Elementary with Crawford, the closing of Joy Elementary, and the distribution of students in surrounding schools, and the closing of Nordale Elementary to provide space for district alternative programs like BEST, homeschool, and distance learning. The board was not interested in repurposing for the career, the relocation for the Career and Education Center at a new location. The, in addition to the discussion, the board was in favor, in their conversation, of shifting to a 6-8 model for middle school. That's a summary of the work session.
Thank you so much. Was there anything further from the board? Mr. Doran, you were not here for that meeting, so we're interested to hear your input.
Yes, I, sorry that I wasn't here, but I was camping along the banks of the Rio Grande, and there was no connectivity of any sort. So, but I did listen to the full meeting, and I do have several questions. I worked really hard to make sure that I was not repeating anything from then. And I've also reserved some, I'll make some appointments. First, an observation that I want to make is that I would put out there for board consideration as we move forward is that we divide the, the options that are out there into three separate items rather than one big package. They have very significant differences. There's a closure of school, there's repurposing, and there's a great shift. And each of them, I'm looking forward to getting some information that I sent questions to the administration earlier this month. So I'll be looking forward for those responses. But just some questions that came forward as I looked at tonight's information and some updates on the scenario one, closure issue, some clarifications. Am I correct that the SAS, SDA, and discretionary budget is basically based on per-student allocations? And so the, where I'm going with this is, they, those are listed as savings, small as they may be. But if it's per-student, the student number is still the same effectively. So that would not be a savings. They would just move over to a different school's budget. Am I correct?
So, Mr. DeGraw, you want to address that?
Yeah, I can double-check this, but if my memory serves me correctly, that would represent a small fixed allocation that's made. And then in addition to the fixed allocations per-student allocations that you're referencing, Mr. Doran?
Okay, so the numbers on here are per-student, or?
No, those would represent fixed allocations that go to a school first. And then in addition to those fixed allocations are the per-student allocations that you are referencing. So two layers of allocations, one fixed regardless of how many students there are because there's a school in existence. And then in addition to that fixed allocation, a per-student allocation on top of that.
Thank you. And in terms of the overtime subs, temps, you'd have more staff at that school. So really, those, is that a separate, or would that just really carry over to the new school because you have pretty close to the same numbers now?
Those savings would represent overtime, sub, and temp costs related to the number of positions that we're reducing because of the school closures.
Okay, so that's only the reduction, represents reductions?
Correct. That's not 100% reductions there, no.
Okay, thank you. And if I can ask one more on this page, actually, I'm sorry, one and a comment. The .5 positions under Anderson, that same number of students, would they just go full-time at the, at the one school, or is there, they would get reduced services at that other school?
So right now, are you referencing the music and PE teachers, for example?
Counselor, or I'm sorry, music PE, yeah, counselor, test, .5, sure, nurse, sure.
Yeah, so, so the, the new, the consolidated Crawford School will have a 1.0 FTE. So right now, each of those schools have a .5, and so?
So those aren't actual savings because they would be carried over just as teachers would be carried over?
Yeah, let me, let me verify, let me double-check that.
Okay, thank you. And I'll call to make a meeting there. And then the, the other comment on here is Nordale, and I'm not sure that I, well, I don't, at this point, feel that that repurposing is appropriate or the closure appropriate as one of the newest schools in our district. But the closure versus repurposing, we're not closing the school, or it doesn't reflect if we're repurposing it. This is only if it was absolutely closed and not reused. It was turned back to the borough. Is that correct?
I want to make sure I understand you. Say that one more time, if you would, Mr. Doran.
With Nordale, the recommendation so far coming from the administration is that it be repurposed.
Right.
So those, this scenario one attachment to our packet just is as though we completely closed it, turned it back to the borough, and does not include the cost of repurposing it if that was the school that was to be repurposed.
That's correct. And then, and then the second layer of information to consider would be the, the cost of the repurpose inclusion in the packet. So there, you'd have utility costs added back in as a cost of that repurpose, for example.
And any building that would be repurposed would have to factor in cost modifications, any renovations?
So, so we're not including one-time costs in here, for example, right now? This does not include one-time costs. Would be ongoing expenditures for a repurpose.
Okay. And I'll be looking for that information when we are making considerations for a decision.
Just to be clear, Mr. Doran, what you're asking for, that the information we'll be looking for will be the one-time cost associated with the repurpose. Correct?
Yes, yeah. I want to know what the full, the full cost of closing a school is involved because it is a savings, but as been mentioned, and one of the things I've already raised is, you know, if we're moving art, we're moving things out of the building, what modifications we need to make for other buildings or transfer, you know, what's, what's the full cost as well as the savings? Because we may not be saving as much money as we think. May not really pencil out, you know. I'm, I'm not arguing for or against either one. I just want us to have full information. And so to your point, yes, I want to know what those one-time costs are because that'll impact our budget going forward.
Thank you. Do any other members have further questions?
Do any other members have further questions? Seeing none, Mr. Doran, did you have further?
Yes, and I'll try not to take too much time. And, and some of these may be things, please make sure we have the information if you don't have it tonight, you know. So when I look at repurposing, what are the needs of the programs? Are we looking at the appropriate building for that? And then the information tonight, both Randy Smith is raised as a closure. Nordale is raised as a closure, either one for repurposing. So what's going, what will include? We've already, and I agree with the board's comments from the work session, that CEC is probably best where it is. A question that came up at the work session was with Bridge, whether we indeed qualify for financial, I forget the term you use, Mr. DeGraw, but for consideration of getting out of the lease, financial hardship. If we're closing a school, it seems we are in financial hardship. So what, what's in there, what the needs of the programs are, and then what those costs for renovations, modifications would be required? And what building provides the best resources for that? And that, that goes into the scenario you gave regarding possibly closing a middle school. Randy Smith as being one of those. And, and perhaps if it's mainly secondary programs that are being gone in, that would be the issue there. And let me continue one, and then I'll pause, see if there's anybody else. That when we look at BEST, what, we talk about gaining students. What I'm concerned about in part is losing students who will return to our neighborhood schools. Because a lot of people I know, a number of people I talked to stayed with BEST because they liked it, they knew they could do it for this year. But they would be interested in going back to their neighborhood school with an assurance that we're in person. And I link that with, we opened Barnett as a magnet school to attract home school families. It didn't gain us a lot in terms of numbers. And so just putting that in the hopper where, where we really are, and if they're mainly homeschooling, how much space we need. That's why they're homeschooling. So not years are bad that have been tossed out. I want to keep, keep that conversation going. Let me pause there.
Thank you.
I don't have, I'm getting through the list pretty quickly.
And I, I, Ms. Marotti, I see that you have your hand up. And I just want to note that because Mr. Doran was not able to attend that meeting, I'm just going to indulge him a few a little more questions than maybe normal. Ms. Marotti?
Just a quick one. Why are two FTE being eliminated if the students are moving over to Crawford? Mr. DeGraw, you want to address that?
And that's instruction FTE, sorry.
Where are you referencing, Ms. Marotti?
On the cost savings for scenario one. There's a, the second line item is, is teachers' instruction, 235,000 to FTE.
Okay, in scenario one, sorry. That that would not necessarily apply to that situation. So that, I would, I would eliminate that as a savings for Anderson, so. District-wide, district-wide, what the, the, the concept that we're dealing with is as you, as you close one school and move students to other schools, there's lots of, if you think of classrooms as buckets, you fill up existing buckets that aren't already full. But in that situation of Anderson, that doesn't apply because it's whole grade levels being transferred over. So that 235, I will, I will eliminate that.
Are there others on that list that we need to be made aware of that need to be eliminated?
I also need to verify if so the .5 teachers that Mr. Doran brought up, the .5 music and, in music and PE, if there's a 1.0, which I'm thinking we do have, those .5s would be removed as well for music and PE.
May I follow up? So the counselor, the one that was here, she said she's at both Crawford and Anderson. And so but the counselor on here is at one.
And that's because, so allocated, we do have 1.0 counselors allocated to each. She's covering for a vacancy, so that's an unfilled position that we have.
Thank you.
And also, I'll update that number on Anderson as well. Again, these are illustrative numbers here. I will remove those. What I'll actually have also, in addition, is by the 1st of February, we'll be able to have more exact numbers. We'll be able to plug scenarios into MBF now that we are seeing somewhat of a clearer path. We'll be able to input these items specifically into MBF and come up with more specific numbers to each scenario.
So, Mr. DeGraw, would you clarify what MBF is?
My Budget File. So it's our budgeting software tool that we use, that, that we use to, to run and prepare the budget.
Thank you so much. Mr. Sampson?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. DeGraw, really quick, I, just so I understand you correctly, when you said that it's possible that the two FTE under the scenario one in reference to Anderson teachers, assuming that we did a restructure where, where we closed two schools and repurposed one, is it possible that we could still go along this line item here for, for, for teachers? And there would be a two, two, and a two, a total of six, a possible reduction of six full-time employees? When you, when you're talking about the bucket and it gets convoluted and complicated, and kids are going here and going there, and, and your PTR changes? And, or are you insinuating that that's a misprint?
Yeah, that, that would, that was a good catch. Oversight on my part, as I was, as I was preparing the scenarios for each school, that specific scenario of kids going to a number of different schools doesn't apply in this, in the situation of Anderson and Crawford. Because 100% of those kids in whole grade bands are just moving to a new location. So.
Thank you.
That's, concept would not apply to Anderson's situation.
Thank you. Any further questions before Mr. Doran has a few more? Okay.
Thank you. Regarding the school capacity projections, the updated ones, is there a reason that Discovery Peak is included on those capacities and none of the other charter schools are? It would seem that Discovery Peak does not belong on that list, except as a side note like the others.
The reason why it's there, Mr. Doran, is because that is in the category of Ileson and North Pole area elementary schools. And so it's, while it is a charter school, different than the regular tenants area schools, it, we're, we're listing it for the possibility of potential available seats.
But the charter schools in the Fairbanks area are not listed except as a side note.
Yeah, and, and historically, the reason why these charts were originally set up is we were using them to look at, at the Ileson and North Pole area schools for the purpose of the F-35 bed down and ensuring that we had enough capacity in that area. So I could update, I could update those numbers at the bottom right corner, and I'm not sure if this is included in your, in the board's handouts. It does list out the charters, the rest of the charters.
Yeah, and, and that's why we put a charter in one, but not in the other. And these are updated, and we've already taken care of the F-35. So I would, I would say that it should be removed, suggest that unless you come up with something else. The, the other thing in terms of, when I look at capacity is in the 6-8 configuration potential. What would have, what's the plan to happen with the, our current K-8 schools? We have four, I believe, in our district ones. I'm not talking about the charters. We have three neighborhoods and one magnet. What's, would all of them go K-5?
The conversation was that, yes, they would all go K-5. One, one point of the conversation was that the 6-8 models that we have now in LAD, of course, Joy won't be there, but LAD, Arctic Light, Joy.
And Barnett.
And, and Barnett. So Barnett is a, is, is a magnet school, and it was created to be a K-8 school. And they have the numbers to support that program. When we look at LAD and Arctic Light, the population in their seventh and eighth grade just doesn't support a K-8 model. And it's, it's difficult staffing for the number of students that are involved in those programs. So the original, if I understand, the original reason for moving to those schools, moving to a K-8 model is to offer a district-wide option for parents. And, and while I believe they have developed good programs, there just hasn't been the enrollment to support a K-8 program in those schools. So that's how the conversation was. And so moving it, you know, district-wide except for specific identified K-8s, it, it would be a K-5 configuration, 6-8 middle school, 912 high school.
Okay, and Barnett would stay as a K-8?
Right.
In your recommendation?
Right, yes.
If it did go to a K-5, and I'm kind of going back, things change over time. But with Barnett having been established as a magnet, particularly to entice homeschool parents, that if it went K-5 in a discussion, and I hate to do this because I haven't talked to the principal there since I just got in this morning, but for the BEST program actually to be housed in a wing?
There really hasn't been any discussion to go that way. Keeping Barnett as a K-8 school, just simply because the enrollment supports it. There, there hasn't been any discussion about that.
Thank you. And in terms of the surveys, do we have a collation of, or do we anticipate getting a collation of comments that came in within the survey? Or although I know that was very limited access to that, or although they could put in other options in that, do we have a collation of those comments? And, and the ones that have been coming in?
Of course, all of the comments that came through email, the board would have received. And then as well as Ms. Tuttles sending any Let's Talk through our, our app, that has been sent to the board via email as well. So all of those would be available to you. And that was the primary way that we received input was, was via email or through Let's Talk. On the survey, Ms. Herbie, you want to address the, the survey question?
Yes, so there was, there wasn't a spot, as Ms. Malley was saying, there wasn't a spot on the survey for open-ended comments simply due to the fact that it takes a lot of staff time on, on the backend to go through all of those to get them to where they're, you know, coherent and usable for the board, just because we, again, have gotten in the past in other surveys, like thousands of open-ended responses, and it took days and days of staff time to actually sift through all that. So that was one, one reason it wasn't included on the survey. And instead, they were, the people who wanted to provide more of that feedback were encouraged to reach out to the board through the other avenues that are available to them. What was done instead was, on the survey, there's questions where they took components of the plans that, and the options that had been looked at, and then people were able to rank those. And what we found was, I mean, 40% were happy with the options that were already presented. And a lot of the highest, highest-ranked options that people looked at were what were already included in some of the, in the existing options that were ranked the highest in the other parts of the survey.
And then I will note at, at the beginning, and then again at the end of the survey, it was stated that if you, you know, if you don't like any of these options, or you want to give feedback, email the board through email or the Let's Talk app. So, so that was kind of a part of the survey, that if, if folks didn't like any of this, they could give their input to the board via email.
Thank you. And, I'm sorry, Mr. Doran, do you have a lot more questions?
No, no.
Okay.
Getting right down. And, and others that I have, I will make individual points.
I just want to be cognizant of the time.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so on the Bridge lease, in the, since last week's meeting, have we gotten any further information on that?
No, we don't have any further information at this time.
And we will for our next meeting.
I will, I will attempt to have additional information by our next meeting.
Okay, the, the reason I'm, I'm pushing it is we don't know what programs we're even talking about for repurposing. You know, so if some are left out, then that knows. You know, and what those needs of those individual programs are.
Right. At this point, the, for repurposing, it, the, the conversation at the work session was for BEST, homeschool, e-learning, the e-learning teachers, students, support. And then there was discussion at the board meeting about SMART as well. So right now, that's been the discussion that we've had, that the board has had so far, were those three programs. And this particular building, Nordale, is, is suited for those programs.
And if those programs moved out of this building, what would be done with the, all the available space within this building?
Well, if those programs move out of this place, there wouldn't be that much available square footage because those office spaces are quite small. However, I've already been approached by different departments of where, how we might use that space for district-wide staff and other offices needed in different departments. So while we haven't had that formal discussion, again, don't want to get out in front of the board with any decisions that they're making. We would, we would find good use for those programs.
Okay, and is there any costs involved with that that would be included in the budget clearly?
I'm not sure that there's a number that we've assigned to it yet. But naturally, any move would constitute a cost.
Okay. Okay, let me pause there because I don't want to, I know you went through time last week, and I really appreciate all the time you put in. It was, it was very informative to listen to the meeting and answer some of my questions right then. But, but I will look forward to the answers to some of the questions that I sent you on the 3rd, sent to the administration and the board president. And as I said in my email, that information can be shared with the full board. So they know what questions I asked, whatever.
Right, and some of your questions, we did incorporate into the question list. Right, and some of your questions, we did incorporate into the question list at the work session.
Yes, I'm aware of that.
So.
Yeah, yeah, but there are, there are others that, I'm, I guess my concern in our conversations is that we have clear information upon which to make a decision. I really appreciated the outline of some of the pluses for why sixth graders moving into a middle school would be, is advantageous to students. We still haven't seen a plan for that to take, what that would actually mean in carrying it out. And I'm thrilled that you're working with the Middle School Association. One last question and that'll stop, okay? In terms of middle school, Ben Eilston Junior High would become a middle school under this model? It'd be a middle high.
Mr. Minor?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. And thank you to the board for your patience.
And, and I will just, it just make this, make this note. There are some things that are knowable with certainty. And then there's some things that will be evolutionary in process as we start down this. And one may be, what will the middle school look like? And, and Mr. Minor has had conversations with the middle school leadership about this whole topic and talking up, and talking about ways that it could look in individual buildings, building leadership skills to, to change ways that we've been doing it. So, so some things will be concretely knowable. Some things won't until a middle school gets, gets into it and has, you know, you can plan, but every good plan with first contact doesn't always work. So, so as concretely as we can, we can answer questions, but some questions will be unknowable until the decision is made and we start down the road.
Thank you, Ms. Millie. I did want to interject to a question that Mr. Dorn had brought up about Barnett being appropriate for homeschool. And I wanted to reiterate some conversations that we had. And as a prior homeschool parent, that the program that we're looking to create would not necessarily appeal to homeschoolers if it were to exist in an operating school. It's kind of like taking your kid for a salad bar through a candy store. And that just isn't something I think would be attractive and it would defeat the purpose of the, some of the, some of the purpose of the repurposing of the BEST location. Mr. Minor, would, would you say that is accurate?
Absolutely. With my extensive experience in homeschooling and running homeschooling programs, that's been my experience is that homeschool and traditional homeschool families really want a standalone building that has very few barriers to entry to that facility itself. If you think about our facility right now, first you have to find parking, which can be a challenge. Then you have to find out where BEST is actually housed. Once you do that, then you have to go up a set of elevator or stairs. Once you're on the second floor, then you have to look for signs to actually get to that BEST homeschool spot. And all of those are barriers to entry when you could just walk in that front door and be able to talk to, you know, homeschool representative and figure out what BEST is all about.
The additional piece of that is home, and is integrating a, the homeschool program into an already existing building. And one of the challenges identified with that is a traditional brick and mortar school has schedules where they schedule the gym and they schedule the library and they schedule the cafeteria. And they, they run their building with schedules. So to try to fit into that is a barrier in and of itself in that finding time to use the facility in a way that a homeschool family might want to use it is kind of butting up against a regular school schedule, which, you know, Mr. Dorn, as you know, is very, very full. So that was another, that was another thing that we looked at when we looked at just putting BEST homeschool into an already existing building as, as a barrier.
Thank you. Anything further from any board members, Mr. Dorn and Mr. Sampson?
And I want to toss this question out that I can be informed as we go along. In terms of homeschool and building use, I really would like to see, and I'm anticipating that you will present us, the administration will present us a fairly clear, though things evolve and develop, plan for that homeschool. When we talk about a building, home school, home is building. And we do know that a lot of people who do homeschool are also doing it so that they can travel. Their students can participate in sports in different parts of the country. Military who want to keep, who are changing assignments, want to keep with homeschool programs, one program, but use elsewhere. So I'll be looking for some information that will help inform my decision and an understanding of, you know, because we do want these options. And I think they're really important for our community. And our district, I think, has shown that over decades, we do in-person well. Homeschool has been, for us, a component of the options. Other districts do homeschool well and in-person is a component of the options within their district. So I'll be looking for that type of information.
So just for some of the conversation that's, that has happened around that very topic. And, and Mr. Minor has had extensive experience working with homeschool families. And, and to your point about some districts do homeschool well and brick and mortar as an offering. What I think Fairbank's school district can do is brick and mortar really well and homeschool really well. So we can have both components that are desirable for families. But one of the things that, that we've come to know about homeschool families and all of them, just like you mentioned, military families, flexibility with travel. And the other thing that we've learned about homeschool families is that they do seek out community within their homeschool families. They like to connect with each other, to do group projects, which has been one of the problems with having it here in this building. And their, their extremely limited space, there's not really a space to build that kind of homeschool community that homeschool families look for. While, yes, they receive their instruction at home, they still seek to collaborate with other like-minded families. So we are extremely limited by our space here to offer that. We've tried a couple of different things. It hasn't been wildly successful to get groups together. So that would be one way that we would build our program in a way that we could be really good at homeschool and really good at brick and mortar school. And there are, I, I don't know that there are any homeschool programs in our area that offer the kind of, the kind of community building that we could offer by having a, a space and a place for homeschool families. So that was a little bit of the conversation around what we know about homeschool families and how to make us a good homeschool option for the families in our borough. I don't know if that was helpful, but that was a discussion.
Yes, no, thank you for the perspective, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson.
Thank you. I just want to say, Mr. Minor, I have the utmost trust in your competency in leading this district to the new, to new uncharted waters in reference to our homeschool program with your background. I look forward to, to the progress that we look to, to achieve in the future. I wanted to mention that homeschool programs, you know, homeschoolers don't want to be confined or put within a box. The BEST homeschool programs out there, although the students excel for whatever reason, their family choose, choose that homeschool path, the BEST programs excel when the students can come together from time to time, be it for labs or outings or activities or whatnot, technology. And, and I think that's, that's where, where the district is going to shine and have the upper hand. To Mr. Dorn's comment, I, I would also like to see a little more information on, on what it could look like. But I know that this is new. You know, as, as our chief administrator mentioned, it's ever-changing. And so, you know, I look forward to working with you on the changes that are coming in the future. As to what the middle school will look like, it, it would look like sixth, seventh and eighth grade in one school, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. I'd also like to mention that each one of our middle schools, as we progress in that direction, won't be a boilerplate middle school. We're going to start conversations and having, and have facilitated conversations on what that individual school community really wants their middle school to look like. So for me to create a plan and say, this is what your middle school looks like, would be dishonoring what that community really wants to build into it. And so just today I set out a prescriptive path this spring for our middle school principals and leadership teams to get together, start having real conversations on what that model might look like for their schools if the board does take action and go forward with it. I think it's really important that our middle school communities have a voice in that process and that, you know, will definitely have a solid plan going into next school year, but that they're a part of that plan.
Thank you, Mr. Minor. Was there anything further from the board? Thank you. The next item that we have would be just board member comments. And if we'd like to start with Mr. Dorn?
Just to put on our radar, tonight, there was a community meeting about the Fort Knox ore hauling plans that will have four trucks an hour, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, going from Tetlin to Fort Knox and running up Richardson and, and Stee sideways. And it impacts about 140 bus stops. And that's trucks, four, 75-ton trucks an hour going both ways. Going south, they will be lighter because they won't be hauling off. But we've got these significant sized trucks. And it's something that is important that we at least have on our radar. And whether it may or may not have significant impact. But this is a community conversation that has been kind of quiet. And Fort Knox has been pushed to have a community meeting, start putting information out. And I just put it out there for our board to, to keep on our radar. If at some point it's important for us to look at what its implications may be upon our students and families, whether they're riding the bus or rather they're trying to go in and out of, you know, like Saltra would be right on, right on the roadway. So, so I just want to put that out on, on everybody's radar.
Mr. Sampson?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want, I'd like to express a heartfelt thanks to Ms. Moore with Alliance CPA for all the hard work that her and her company has, has done for this district for many, many, many years. And also a big thank you to Ms. Herbert, that's all, thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
I just had a quick question that I wanted to ask. And that was about what is the supply of our food service? Product-wise, are they able to have the, the products that they need for, for the food for our students? Just curious on that.
Mr. DeGraw?
Yes, so the, the latest word we've heard from Ms. Rouse is that existing inventories are dwindling, but they're still getting regular orders. Those orders are just typically getting smaller and smaller. So she, she's hopeful that we're not going to run into any major issues by the end of the school year. But yeah, they're, they're noticing inventory levels dropping and depleting. So hopeful, optimistic that we'll, that we'll get through and just continuing to work with vendors and, and contractors to make sure we, we have as many options as available. They're reaching out to additional vendors as well, just in case. But as you, as you might imagine, you know, all districts are doing the same thing. So one illustration of the shortages, we had a shortage of utensils, prepackaged utensils recently. But I think they got that, that taken care of. So yeah, it's, it's a constant battle and struggle as are many things in that arena, but they're, they're working through it.
Thank you. Ms. Maradi?
According to our staff absence data that we heard tonight and provided by our HR director, it appears that we currently have an average of 47 substitutes per day. However, since the beginning of the semester, the need for substitutes has been on average 124 per day. And on average, 113 unfilled absences every day since the beginning of the semester. How far are we going to push our staff before we say enough is enough and do something to help them? According to student attendance data that we heard tonight and provided by chief school administrator, our attendance has dropped to 83% since universal masking was removed from the layered approach to mitigation as a preventative measure before a case outbreak. 83% of our enrolled students is 2,090 students. That's how many students are not learning in our learning institution. How far are we going to push our students and families before we say enough is enough and do something to help? According to our district's dashboard, our district's case rates are at a record high with 298 cases last week. That's 17 times higher than the number of cases we had prior to removing universal masking from our layered approach to mitigation as a preventative measure before a case outbreak. That's also 298 people that we could have prevented from getting and spreading COVID had we been using universal masking as a layered mitigation approach. How far are we going to push our staff, students and families before we say enough is enough? According to the testimony we heard tonight, 362 concerned citizens of our community have signed a petition requesting an immediate return of universal masking to the district's layered approach to mitigation as a preventative measure before a case outbreak. Also, according to the 53 emails that we've received in the last two weeks, parents, doctors, community members and staff, they're all requesting an immediate return of universal masking to the district's layered approach to mitigation as a preventative measure before a case outbreak. How long are we going to ignore our community until we say enough is enough? For all of these reasons and more, I respectfully request an emergency meeting be called to address the need for universal masking as legally as possible. Experts in recent history tell us that universal masking is an inexpensive and effective alternative to thousands of students not learning. Please put our students first and please consider this request.
Thank you. Ms. Matheson?
Thank you. I wanted to let everyone know that our Lethem Girls took first place at State for the second year in a row. And I'd like to thank all of the wrestling coaches in our district for all of your time pouring confidence into our children. And I'd like to thank all of the parents who support our wrestlers and our coaches and our mat managers. I'd like to thank the mat managers and the husbands and wives who support our coaches. And for all of our admin staff that support our coaches, thank you.
Thank you. Colonel Suri?
No comments tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rhodes?
I have no comments at this time.
Thank you. We will entertain a motion to adjourn?
Would like to make one final comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I, I left it out of my report because I wanted to give it a standalone attention. And that is our FMD staff over the holiday, the tremendous amount of organization, and she's coming in the room right now, Jay, our executive director for FMD. Her direction and her organization, they were working night and day organizing spreadsheets, organizing contractors, moving untold tonnage of snow so that we could start school on time, in-person. And I just, I don't think that we can fully appreciate the amount of work that happened in those few days from the storm, 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 and then the opening of schools. So, so I just want to recognize our executive director's leadership and the quality of people that work in that department that are willing to give up their holiday time to, to make sure that our students and staff are ready to start this, the second semester. So, I, I just wanted to recognize them.
Thank you so much, Ms. Maline. And I have nothing further if there is a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second. We're adjourned. Thank you.